This is the hardest part of getting here. You have to do the pledge. Sure about quiet?
Awkward sounds.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Lord, thank you again for this opportunity for us to serve our community. We thank you for this unique journey in our lives and for bringing all of us together in our commitment to our neighbors. We ask for comfort and pray for the safety of everyone in our community as we learn to grow together in this beautiful place we call Republic. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
So, thank you, everyone. At this time, we will open citizen participation. So, anyone that wishes to speak anything not on the agenda, you're limited to three minutes, and please come forward and speak to council.
Sorry, Eric.
Seeing that there are none, at this time, we'll close citizen participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items one through four on the agenda. Seeing there are no...
Nope.
Nope.
Sorry, I was waiting.
Seeing there are no questions or comments, I now need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedules. Our Board of Adjustment meeting on March the 2nd has been canceled. Our supervisors' meeting is on March the 2nd at 10:30 at the Community Center. Our next city council meeting will be March the 7th. Our next planning and zoning meeting will be March the 13th, and our second council meeting in March will be March the 21st. Moving on to old business and tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-01 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Westbury Gardens Phase II subdivision.
Any updates from staff since the last reading?
I just have a brief update. Since this was tabled last time, I just thought it was important, since it's coming up again, since the tabling, all the infrastructure has been completed and tested, and so the city is ready to accept this.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-01.
Motion.
Second.
We're going to take a roll call vote on our computer.
We're still waiting on... Someone still has to...
Brandon, did you vote?
Yep.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Motion carries. We have seven, zero to one. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-03 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic Missouri, Title IV, Government Code, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 405-1 in general and Article 405-3, Zoning Districts' Use and Regulations, Section 405.020, Definitions, Section 405.150, C1, Local Commercial District Regulations, Section 405.165, C3, General Commercial District, Section 405.170, M1, Light Industrial District Regulations, and Section 405.180, M2, Heavy Industrial District Regulations.
Thank you, Laura, and Mr. Tabor is here to give us an overview.
The city is requesting the approval of amendments to the city's zoning regulations to comply with the legalization of recreational marijuana passed by Missouri voters last November. The state created new categories of non-medical licenses that allow for the marijuana sale, marijuana cultivation, and the manufacture of marijuana-related products. These new uses have been placed into the city's zoning districts in line with the intensities of the activity that each use engages in. Uses involved in retailing have been added to the local commercial C1 and general commercial C3 zoning districts. Uses involved in infusion have been added to the light industrial M1 zoning district, and uses involved in cultivation have been added to the heavy industrial M2 zoning district. These assignments are in line with the previous ordinance amendments adopted by council in 2019 upon the state's adoption of medical marijuana at that time. Staff is recommending adoption of this ordinance amendment.
Have any questions from council?
I had a question about, I should know this, C1 and C3, the local versus general. Could you define that?
Generally, if you look at, C3 is, the difference here is C3 calls out specific uses only. C2 is not included there because it encompasses all the C1 uses. For some reason, when C3 was written, it doesn't just include all of C2 and C1, so, because it has several called-out special uses, we had to add that to that, to there particularly.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from council? Do we have any citizens with comments? Okay, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-04 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic Missouri by amending Title VI, Business and Occupation, Chapter 635, Medical Marijuana Facilities, Section 635.010, Definitions, 635.020, Compliance with Law, 635.030, Licensing, 635.040, Distance Requirements from Schools, 635.050, Distance Requirements from Churches, 635.060, Distance Requirements from Daycare, 635.070, Measurements, 635.080, Hours of Operation, and 635.090, Medical Marijuana Facility Requirements.
Mr. Tabor is here to give us an overview.
This piece is, or this legislation is kind of a companion piece to the previous one that the builds department oversees. The adoption of this ordinance is necessary due to the changes made to the state law, which have particular implications for how these state-licensed businesses may operate, as well as the types of regulations that cities may place upon them. This ordinance amendment will update the existing elements such as the 1,000-foot distance for marijuana-related businesses from schools, churches, and daycares to include the new types of facility licenses for recreational marijuana. This amendment also changes the facility requirements portion of the ordinance, bringing it in line with state law by dropping and altering provisions as determined by legal review. Staff is recommending adoption of this ordinance amendment.
We have any questions from council? Mr. Gerke?
So, all of these are in compliance the same or further than what the state law requires?
Yes, that's the goal of these ordinances, simply to meet the state's requirements.
Thanks.
All right, one more. Pretty consistent with other cities in the area near our size?
Yes, the city, while we are one of the earlier cities to kind of get this work done and put on our agenda, it is consistent with what other, with what other cities in the areas are doing. There was a bit of a review as to what other, other people in the region were planning to do as well.
Chris, what is the state law as far as distance from like schools and churches? Are we further out or?
The state law is the 1,000 feet.
Oh, it is the 1,000. What are we currently?
1,000, but it only applies to medical marijuana, and so this will apply it as well to the recreational types of facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Do we have any citizens signed up to speak for the... Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to number eight, item number eight, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-05 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic Missouri, Title II, Public Health, Safety, and Welfare, Article 215-11, Offenses Concerning Drugs and Alcohol, Chapter 215, Offenses, by amending Section 215.1800, Possession or Control of a Controlled Substance by repealing Section 215.1801, Failure to Produce Medical Marijuana Identification, and Section 215.1804, Medical Marijuana Cultivation, and by adding new Section 215.1805, Marijuana Cultivation.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Ms. McCullough here to give us an overview.
Yes, okay, so this is the third sort of, to use those words, companion piece, related topic on Amendment Three, the changes on recreational marijuana. These particular code section revisions are to Chapter 215, is the Republic's criminal code, the equivalent of a criminal code. Essentially, it is updating what used to be the law here in Republic, which was the legalization of any amount of marijuana for something other than a medical purpose. Of course, that's moot now with the amendment, so that's going to be repealed. And then, of course, the addition of various provisions that are in line with Amendment Three. For instance, there's a maximum amount that a person can have, there's a minimum age, so it'd still be illegal for persons under 21 or for anybody to have over three or six grams, ounces. It's in line with what the state law now says, and so it's a revamp of the code as it was. And then, we are removing the two medical marijuana provisions and adding a new one on the cultivation, since that's really going to be kind of the new trend going forward. And so, we want to stay on top of it in terms of that regulation to the extent that we're able under the new provisions. So, those are the gist of the changes.
Thank you. Have any questions from council? Seeing there are none, do we have any citizen comments? There are no citizens signed up to speak. Remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-06 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic Missouri by amending Title V, Building and Construction, Chapter 520, Fences and Walls, Section 520.020, Applicability, Section 520.030, Definitions, and Section 520.040, Fences and Walls.
That was it, Ruiz?
Yep, Ruiz.
Mr. Ruiz is here to give us an overview this evening.
Yeah, the city is requesting the amendments to Chapter 520, Fences and Walls, specifically the sections 520.20, 520.30, and 520.40. In general, the amendments ensure the clarity and concision of existing code. The amendments to 520 serve the following purposes of establishing the awareness of responsibility for stakeholders involved in the fence permitting process, restructuring the fence permit exemption status, and adding language that allows city staff to review fences that are being repaired or replaced within an easement or floodway. The amendments in Section 520.30 created new definitions to enhance and amend sections, and then the section, amendments in 520.40, the purposes for that were to provide an ordinance that is cohesive by grouping related code, protecting the integrity of current infrastructure and visibility of right-of-way, and restructuring current materials listed as prohibited uses while adding wire materials intended for the purpose of agricultural uses.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, man, so, a lot of fence crime, is that why we're doing this, or is it just you reviewing stuff?
Yeah, I was just kind of cleaning it up and putting it all into related codes. Another thing that's been coming up is driving gates and people driving over sidewalks and curves that are not, you know, built for having heavy machinery going over them, so that was something that was concerning. And then, the sight-visibility issue as well, and what is considered one that is sight-visibility or sight-obscuring for a front yard or putting it on a corner lot of a lot, so sometimes we wouldn't allow them at all, and now this allows people to put shank link fences or, and providing more of a consistency of what that means.
We had a lot of people come to you with that request for you guys and...
Not as a request, but I think city staff had an issue of trying to interpret that, and this kind of makes it easier for city staff to determine that.
Any other questions? Do we have any citizens signed up to speak on? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to item number 10, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-07 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic Missouri by amending Title IV, Government Code, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 405-1 in general and Article 405-7, Additional District Provisions, Section 405.020, Definitions, and Section 405.640, Accessory Structures, and by adding new Section 405.643, Decks, and new Section 405.648, Accessory Dwelling Units.
Back again.
Back again.
Ms. Ruiz is here to give us an overview.
The city is also requesting the amendments of Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, which is going with the sections of 405.20, Definitions, 405.640, Accessory Structures, and the addition of Sections 405.643, Decks, and 405.648, Accessory Dwelling Units. And the amendments and additions ensure clarity and concision on constructing accessory structure, accessory dwelling unit, or an ADU, or deck for residential lots. The definitions serve the following purpose of creating new definitions and amended definitions to enhance the current and future sections. The amendments in Section 405.640 provided more flexibility constructing accessory structures in agriculturally-zoned districts or parcels located on corner lots, and then it redacted any redundancies that were provided in the new sections, and then it restructured height regulations that did not exhibit enclosed walls, so it was strictly just for like sheds. And then, the addition of 405.643 served the purpose of providing staff guidance to structures that have similar qualities to accessory structures and home additions, and then the addition of 648, Accessory Dwelling Units, was provided for more housing options that is appropriate to existing housing stock, infrastructure, and character and scale of single-family residences.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council?
Yeah.
Mr. Updike?
Now, with the previous ordinance and this one, these are all, have to be inspected by city inspector before approval, correct?
Depends on the accessory structure, but yes.
So, if it's even add-on after the houses, or the house is currently built, if they, like a couple years later, they add-on, this would all have to be inspected also?
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to build a deck, they would have to come to city and get a permit, and then the inspectors would most likely inspect the footings, and depending on the height, they would also look at other components of the deck, and then accessory structure, same thing, depending on if it's pre-manufactured, there's less inspections, but if they're building it, they built it, then there's more inspections.
So, if someone buys a shed and runs electricity or whatever, it'll all have to be inspected also?
Yep, you'll have to get like an MEP permit for the electricity.
Actually, I have a question. So, I'm just kind of assuming here, on a new construction and a new build, would the deck be a part of the permit for the house, not, you wouldn't need a separate permit for the deck?
So, we have been running into that with new builders for homes. Usually, it's a separate permit because they don't know if they're going to be building a deck at the time of the home, and so usually, that's after the fact for a deck.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if someone builds a house and the house is completed, then they decide afterwards, will they have, do they have to still come back out and inspect it?
The deck?
Yeah.
Or the, yes. So, if they were wanting to build a new deck after the home has been completed, they would have to get an inspection of the deck. Now, if they applied for the deck during the home, then the inspectors would inspect the deck during the home.
Any other questions from council? Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read. Get with staff if you have any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 11, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-08 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 10,550 square feet of right-of-way along North Turner Avenue.
And Mr. Tabor is back again to give us an overview.
The city is recommending the vacation of 10,550 square feet of right-of-way, I'm sorry, the west side of North Turner Avenue, just south of Oakwood Heights First Division. If approved, the property returns to the adjacent owner, who is also the individual that was recently taken.
Have any questions from council?
Chris, can I ask why it was taken?
So, in the original plans for that subdivision, there was some planning that Turner Avenue would jog over and actually exist within that right-of-way. So, prior to the actual, the final design of the street, we didn't know where it was going to be taken in anticipation of that kind of jog, so it kind of went into that right-of-way when we, when it was first envisioned.
Yeah, so, I'm just curious...
We no longer need it, so now it goes...
Did we pay them for it, and will they get money in return, or?
No, they'll get the property back, and so, we often take this, we often take the required right-of-way that we need to develop the streets and to maintain them and, you know, possibly expand them depending on the street at the time of development.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Do we have any citizens that have signed up to speak on that? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to item number 12, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-09 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a developer agreement with Republic R3 School District for the construction of a queuing road for the Republic Schools located at North Main Street and West State Highway 174.
Thank you, Laura. We have Ms. Haynes here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, thank you. The builds department is requesting approval authorizing the city administrator to enter into this developers' agreement with the Republic School District. The approved development plan, which was approved earlier this fall, included a queuing road of approximately 2,700 feet for the Republic School District. The developers' agreement authorizes the city to partner with the Republic School District to construct the road improvements, again, consisting of about 2,700 linear feet of asphalt and associated improvements. The city will provide our own labor and materials except for asphalt, which will be 100% pass-through cost to the school district. The purpose of the queuing road is for drop-off and pickup at Lyon and Sweeney Schools. The road will be owned and maintained by the Republic School District, and then the road itself will reduce traffic backups both on Main Street, West State Highway 174, and then also at that four-way intersection, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
It's kind of email from every parent in Lyon and Sweeney, asking how soon it's going to be done.
That's an excellent question. We are working on the exact timeframe, but we do anticipate starting right after school was out, which is like the third or fourth week of May, and then we will be finished approximately like at least 10 days before the start of school for the fall season.
It's great news.
Funny story, I made a bad decision and went on Main to get out of town, did a ride at 3:30, and got stuck there, and then I saw a lady go on the sidewalk because she got so frustrated, and I thought, I get out what all this is about, so...
We do anticipate significant improvements. The 2700, we will house approximately 230 cars, so we'll have substantial improvements there.
Yes, so good.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor? Just a couple of comments. One, we appreciate the partnership with the school just to try to solve a problem at 174 Main that's been going on for...
Historically forever?
Historically forever, probably since the schools were built. It will help us in that school pickup-drop-off timeframe. One thing I noticed the other day, leaving work about 5:30, which is outside a school timeframe, when everybody's coming home, we still have quite a bit of traffic in the intersection, so there's, there's still work to do at 174 Main, but this will definitely help.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I did have one question. So, is this pretty much the same as the, what we had seen before? Has there been any significant changes?
No significant changes. This was the original development plan. Right now, the engineers are just, they're working on the infrastructure plans of what the pavement looks like. There are some stormwater improvements, so just the associated improvements that go along with constructing an actual room.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions from council? Any citizens signed up to speak? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to number 13, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-10 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation bonds, Series 2023, of the City of Republic Missouri, approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Thank you, Laura, and we have Mr. Keeling here to give us an overview this evening.
Good evening. Excited to be here. Just another step in bringing about the projects that were promised to the voters last August when they were due to sales tax or capital approvals for park system. So, we're seeking your approval for the issuance and sale and delivery of these bonds. We're hoping the proceeds will amount to somewhere around 9.4 million. There is a possibility that buyers for these bonds will pay premium, and that could push our proceeds away from around 9.7 million dollars. But what we intend to do is utilize these funds for expansion of the La-Z-zy River, just to keep that stuff in the, okay, no worries. So, we haven't seen the images before, but expansion to the aquatic center to include the La-Z-zy River, Phase One construction of the JR Martin Park Community Events Base, and if there's any money left over from this first issuance, this first borrow amount, I'd use that for architectural engineering services for a complex, the 100, very successful parcel we bought a couple of years ago, so, they did find me. So, I do want to state that this is the first debt issuance for the park system to bring about these improvements. This one limited to somewhere around 9.4 to 9.7 million dollars. We're going to see how much the borrow amount will be for the second debt issuance to bring about the complex in the regional park. This one, obviously, we're terribly excited about. We've been working with our architects, we've been working with our engineers, we've been working with every consultant we can to bring about this project. It is going to be electric. We're obviously sweating the bid process, so we are currently out to bid for the expansion of the aquatic center. The bids are due March the 7th. We're hoping those come in, and we have tremendous amount of favor. We're also hoping for a favorable bond rating. We went through S and P calls last Tuesday, due diligence calls last Tuesday. We have a good, good bond rating right now, but we're hoping maybe we can get that up and take, so everything we can do to potentially lower that interest rate down a little bit would be great. If you recall on wastewater, I believe we got those at three or just a hair under last year. When we started this process, our bond council said we... we might be in for 5%, somewhere in there. As of right now, as of last week, we probably may be closer to 4%. So favor it. That matters, it matters a lot. As you can matter 1% in interest on a project of this size, it can really affect the amount of money we have to go into the project initially. We are recommending approval of this. Excited to bring it about when we come to you on the second read from March 7th. We're actually going to have preliminary bids in hand. We'll be happy to share that information.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Do we have any citizens that have signed up? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 14. 23-R-10. A resolution of the city council authorizing the Builds Department to purchase a fifth pump for Schuler Creek Lift Station. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-10, please.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Brickner is here to give an overview.
Good evening. So as was reported in the admin report last month, Schuler Creek Lift Station had two pumps go down in January. The important thing was city crews acted quickly. We did not have a sanitary sewer overflow, which was really bad. So we were able to get our backup pump hooked up, everything in time. We rented an extra pump just in case, so we wouldn't have that issue. But Schuler Creek was operating with only one main pump in line. So last year, we took pump four out to get serviced, and it had not come back yet. So as of today, that pump is back installed. There are two functioning pumps, but the two pumps that broke down in January are still out. So what this authorization allows us to do is move forward with the purchase of a fifth pump. We'd like to continue, excuse me, to use flight pumps because the control system for each one of these pumps is set up for flight pumps. So the idea would be with this fifth pump, we can rotate them in and out as we take them out to warranty service or just general maintenance on them. So the reason we want to stick with flight, like I said, those control panels are set up for the flight pump. If we were to go with a different brand, we would have to change out the control processes for that specific pump. And then we can't just alternate them in and out in each chamber like we would like to do. So JCI quoted us two different, JCI is the sole source for flight pumps in this area. They quoted us two different systems. One at $138,220 that uses a closed-loop cooling system, so it's cooling with its own system versus what they call product cooled, which is cooled by the actual influent in the well itself. And the difference in price of those two was $22,604. We are suggesting to go with the one that's a little bit more, it's the better product, with how much influent comes to that station and how much grit is in the influent that it receives there. We believe that may be part of why it's possible burning up. So staff recommends the purchase of the flight model with the closed-loop cooling system, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brickner. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Griggy.
Are any of the existing pumps the closed? Are they all, all the existing ones are the non-closed systems?
That's correct, they're all non-closed. That was the technology at the time, five years ago, when we replaced this. So this is kind of a new system.
Mr. Brickner, so you said we had two pumps right now that are operating full capacity, so we still have a spare just in case one of those goes down currently?
Yes, we have a portable backup pump that we can take to any of our lift stations. So that's what we hooked up there. It is still currently hooked up there just in case we need it. Two of the actual, two of the actual four pumps at the station are running.
And what's the turnaround time on a rebuild for one of those pumps?
So the rebuild, we sent back in October, came back mid-January, so about three months. It really depends on how damaged the pump is. The one that was rebuilt wasn't really damaged. We just took it out of service because it was time for it to be maintained. So with the purchase of the fifth pump, the idea would be we'll never have only three, there will always be four in service at a time.
Got you.
Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify on the pump system at Schuler Creek, there's four pumps in the wet well, and they operate at variable times. So that's to extend the life of the pumps. If we had, well, one pump could actually run the lift station very scarily, it could. It would burn up pretty fast if it operated that. So they operate at variable times. That was, the way it was designed was to have four pumps in place. We've had trouble, just to give a little bit of reference to the, if one breaks down and we send it in to be rebuilt, it's about $50,000 to $60,000 with a one-year warranty. Whereas if we buy a new pump, because we'll probably come up on this soon with some other pumps, it's about $130,000, but you get a five-year warranty. So we're in that really weighing, if you get it rebuilt for $60,000, but only get a year or two years out of it versus a five-year warranty at 130, you might be money ahead. But Schuler Creek is probably the biggest threat when it comes to a problem in our wastewater system, so that's one we want to keep an eye on.
Sure. Mr. Griggy.
No, someone, we have some proposed other, you know, changes to the pumps in the sewer system. Will these be compatible, I guess, with the other ones? Will we continue to use these same brands for the future changes that we see foreseeable, or will it?
Sure. So for Schuler Creek Lift Station, recommendation will be to continue to use these pumps. We do have some CIP projects where we are completely replacing the whole system. In that case, we do go out to bid and select based on the actual bid, if we're going to continue to use flight or if it's a different company that provides those pumps and controls.
Thanks.
If it gets approved, how quickly does this one get here? Getting inserted?
Soon.
Hopefully.
Is it already built? The last time we were, it just, I hate to use the answer, it depends. That's not a good answer for this council, but it depends. We've had, seen it up to 18 months. I'm hoping that supply chain things have gotten better, but it does, I believe, actually come from Sweden. So there's a lot of, a lot of logistics there.
So we're not going to pick it up ourselves?
Not, it's not on the shelf at Lowe's, huh? Sounds like a field trip.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries 8-0-0. Moving on to item number 15. 23-R-11. A resolution of the city council authorizing the Builds Department to purchase easements to facilitate construction of wastewater capital projects. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-11, please.
Motion. Second.
I'm going to cover this one.
Okay. Mr. Nelson is going to give us an overview on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the council will recall, we had a little bit of discussion last meeting. We were awarding the bid for CIP 6, which is an improvement to our Schuler Creek Gravity Main. We actually do have an ordinance in place for staff to go out and procure easement. Actually, Karen and I wrote that ordinance a couple of years ago, so we had kind of forgotten about that. But we have all of the permission in place that we need. What this ordinance really allows is for a little bit more flexibility in the purchasing policy. So we'll still report all of this to council, but it gives us an amount not to exceed. Because we're talking about 31 easements here, we're likely to creep up into beyond the city administrator's authority for the purchasing policy. So this approval helps us with that. We'll report all those easement acquisitions to the council as they come in.
Any questions from council? Mr. Griggy.
So these are the, these were what we approved in the bid last session, right? And then is that the normal process of easements after the bid? How's that usually work?
It's not ideal. I won't say that it never happens, but in general, you would like to have all of your easements in place before you award a bid. So the way we're going to handle CIP 6, given that there's so many, there's two that are by far the majority, so that'll be our primary focus in acquiring easements. It's not ideal. We've done it before, but what we're going to do on CIP 6, what we're going to award is not the actual construction. Even though council approved that bid, we're going to award just procurement of the easements, the surveying involved, and the materials purchased because there's a lead time, as we know, with pipe and manholes and that sort of thing. So we're not going to actually award construction until the easements are actually acquired.
Then what happens if the pushback, you know, to the owners, the citizens on the easements?
Yeah, it's a, it's a negotiation. We're required to negotiate in good faith. Generally, staff will work on like historical data for easements, what you would pay per square foot for an easement. For an example, on a sewer easement, depending on how much, how much we're talking, how much land it is, something like 50 cents a square foot is kind of in the realm of reasonable. I've seen it way less, I've seen it way more. It kind of just depends. We like to consider the impact we're having. So even if it's, think about this, if you only had 100 square foot easement that I needed from you, I'm going to come in and offer you $50 for, to tear up your yard and look at a mess for a month. We try to take all that inconvenience into consideration too. So when you look at it per square foot, sometimes it gets higher. But generally, that's how we approach it. If a resident is like adamant, no, this is not, I don't want that easement. I mean, there's options there. We can, we can utilize eminent domain if it's like a make or break of the project, but we can also send our engineer back to say, can we do this a different way? One thing about CIP 6 in general, all of these properties, for the most part, already have a sewer easement on them. This is merely giving us a little bit of extra space to build the new line. In a lot of cases, we're giving something back. Ideally, we would have tried to fit that into the same easement. It's just hard to do and keep the existing line flowing.
Thanks. Any other questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Resolution carries 8-0-0. Moving on to the finance report. Mr. Keeling is here to give us the finance report. Second most exciting part of the evening.
What was the first?
The opening.
Oh. I was told it was the first, but I was just kidding. So this will be a short finance report for tonight. When we come back on March the 7th, we're going to give a pretty robust finance report, tell you how we closed out 2022. The auditors were here preliminarily the week on January 23rd for doing some initial field work. They're going to come back next work, next week for more field work, and then ultimately, that will lead to reporting their findings to you in May and June. So while we have the numbers for 2022, they will be unaudited when we come to you on March the 7th, but those numbers were favorable to us. Just a short report for tonight, though. Sales tax in the month of January for us increased by 32%. And I say that, and that's a big number. If you'll recall, at the end of 2022, we were 18.59% over 2021, which is a great number as well. So, but we do already have access to the February data, and the February data was down 28%. So I think rather than rush to say, hey, we're going to realize 32% at the end of the year, rather than rush to say we're going to be 28% down, what we need to do is get a four or five months' worth of data. State reporting is state reporting. The ebbs and flows of that thing are crazy. I'm privy to the report, and it's just, it's just, some businesses don't get their taxes paid on time, some do. There's wild variations every once in a while in reporting data, but I believe what we will find at the end of four or five months is will be increases, just don't know the amount of increase. So like I said, the audit is happening now. For the 2022 data, we, I wanted to hit on two highlights, though, for 2022, and excited about both of them. So what we were able to do at the closeout of 2022, as a result of the citizens passing the public safety tax, sales tax in August of 2021, obviously, we said 100% of those proceeds from those taxes will go to public safety. So true to our word, at the end of 2022, we drafted a document, which will soon will be an admin report of figuring out the calculation for that. But every dime that was generated for public safety is going to public safety. We were able to, at the end of '22, made it happen in January, put in $542,000 in reserves for our fire department and $418,000 for reserves for our police department. That money was directly from the sales tax, but also directly from majority of salaries and benefit savings that both of the chiefs realized in 2022. So excited for that. There's a pool of money for public safety in the future. Should they, however they choose to use that, it'll be there for them, whether that be for land, for Station 3, or a substation for police, or just for staff, or better benefits, better pay. Excited to have almost $960,000 in that reserve fund already. So that's good news. And the second part of what I want to report is, we did the same thing in 2021, we're going to do it again in 2022. We promised, as a result of the public safety sales tax, the money was there, we returned the money to streets from the state motor fuel and the state motor sales tax. We're going to be able to do that again. So that will be approximately $348,000. We're going to move back into the streets for projects, street improvements, which we obviously know we've fallen behind on over the years for 2023 and beyond. So we're building a little bit of a cash reserve in our street department, which is terribly important because we're going to put that money in play in improving our roads, but also in infrastructure improvements.
Excellent. Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Keeling.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not David Cameron. He's not Matt Russell. Looking a little different. Yeah. I think we did it better.
Well, mine sound different, too.